Eighteenth for the Montgomery County Commission. If you would join me in a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful morning. Lord, we thank you that you're still in charge, no matter what's happening around us, that we know that you're still in charge, that we just need to ask and lean on your guidance. Lord, just ask you to be with this commission today as we meet and help us to make every decision in the best interest of the entire Montgomery County. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
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 All right, Florence.
Good morning.
Morning.
Our only visitor today is Susan Kennedy with Levitate Legal. We can go over the items to be considered in the formal session. We will consider a proclamation designating April twenty-third through twenty-ninth as Crime Victims Rights Week. Consider a resolution approving the 2023 back-to-school sales tax holiday. Consider donation of Montgomery County Sheriff's Office decommissioned vehicle to impact public safety major program. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies. Are there any additions?
Commissioner Harris, is he on the call? I don't know if he has any. Did he have any? Dan, you got any? Can y'all hear him? Does he have anything?
He does.
Okay.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education. Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue.
Yes, Florence. You have some commissions, Ziegler?
They gave me the evil laugh, so I had to raise my hand up.
Yes, ma'am.
I have something for education. Fifteen hundred to accept Johnson. And fifteen hundred to Jefferson Davis High School. Let me give you my, I'm designated to.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm designated, I need to give, let me give two thousand to Community Action.
All right.
Is that it, Commissioner?
That's it.
Okay. Our two thousand for Chisholm Improvement Neighborhood Association. And one thousand for Echo.
Consider budget change request number one for the county commission. Consider budget change request number two for the Personnel Department. Consider budget change request number one for youth facility detention. Consider position fill requests for the Engineering Department for an administrative support specialist, County Road Equipment Operators One and Two, a district maintenance superintendent, and a civil engineer one. Consider a position fill request for information systems for an IT manager for systems. Consider an unbudgeted position fill request for the Personnel Department. Consider a position fill request for the Probate Judges Office. Consider a position fill request for the Sheriff's Office for our part-time deputy sheriff. Consider travel training requests for community corrections, the county commission, detention facility, personnel, the Revenue Commissioner, and the Sheriff's Office. That's all of our items. Susan Kennedy. We have three future agenda items that pertain to ARPA money. The first is a resolution to obligate American Rescue Act funding and transfer funds through an intergovernmental agreement to the city of Montgomery for certain joint Montgomery Thrive programs, the small business support programs, and the violent crime prevention programs. You remember at the last meeting, Terry reviewed these items in general, and Susan can answer any questions you have.
That's right. We have let the county and the city kind of, you know, split these RFPs. The county's put out some RFPs, and the city's put out some RFPs, and then we've tried to work together with the city and the county staff to figure out where these programs will live and who has the oversight of these programs. And so, the critical home repair, because it's a countywide program, we believe that it would be best housed at the county. And so, we're having the city, through an intergovernmental agreement, transfer money, their half of the critical home repair funds, to the county, and it'll be housed in the Finance Department here in the county, once that contract is negotiated with CARPDEC. And then, as, you know, the other side of the coin, there are some programs that are probably best housed at the city, and that's the Economic Development Department for the Small Business Assistance and Support Program, and then the Office of Violence Prevention for the violence programs. And so, the county will transfer their half through an intergovernmental agreement to the city, and those programs will be housed in those departments at the city. And as we move through other programming in ARPA, we'll see that happen, you know, again and again.
Terry, now, has the city done a resolution on these two items already?
They're gonna do them the same time you do them on the first May meeting.
Okay, so they will do it at the same time.
That's right. Y'all are just gonna review these today. You can vote on them now, or you can vote on them in May, when the city votes on them. They're gonna take up these same resolutions in reverse at the city in their first May meeting.
So they'll talk about it tonight, I guess, at their meeting?
They can, yeah. And I've, you know, we've reached out to them and said, you know, are there any questions? And they seem, they seem to understand the concept, so I think we're good.
Do you have any idea, Susan, when we might actually have an official contract for critical home repairs and have the process in place so that those people who have been waiting for longer than two years, but certainly had some hope when this money came two years ago, those with leaky roofs and bad electrical wires and inadequate plumbing, all of the things that can be addressed with this money? Do you have any idea when we may actually sign a contract and actually have the proposed recipients of these services benefit?
I think it's, I think soon. And I think that what's the good part about this is that the selection committee that worked on the critical home repair selected a vendor that is already very familiar with the county.
CARPDEC.
Yeah, CARPDEC. And so, I feel like that in selecting that vendor, that that's gonna go a lot faster than it would have if some other new vendor had been selected. And so, they made a great proposal, and I think the contract won't be, won't be a holdup at all. I think we'll be able to bring a contract back to you guys as soon as these resolutions are voted on.
Susan, I met with them on last week, and we had a discussion, and they were saying that they felt it was best for that septic to be put back in there with them.
Yes.
To do that also.
Yes.
But with that being said, maybe we need to revisit, though. If we're putting all that back in, will we have enough money to take care of all the septic and the home repair?
I think that it's half a million for the septic and two and a half million for critical home repair, and we can, we can absolutely revisit that. We can look and see, maybe in the first six months. But you can always, y'all have some extra money that has not been allocated, you can always put some additional funds in there.
And we mentioned manufactured homes.
And I was about to say that to you. So I had a meeting with them, and we talked about that. They're gonna do some research, because they said under law, some parts of the manufacturing they can't, and they're gonna look up what you said. So they're doing research on North Carolina, is what you said, and they're gonna figure out how we can do it, or do we need to make that a separate part? How do we need to do that? So they're gonna do research, they're on it, because they came down to my area, which you know, I have a lot of manufactured homes in my area. And they were down last week, and they promised they're gonna do some research on how we can get that done.
Thank you. What about the business now? Have you outlined specific benefits from the money that's, I don't know who's gonna handle this money?
The city, the city's Economic Development Department will handle the small business support program. And I, last, our last joint meeting, we had Hope Credit Union was the, has gotten a preliminary award in that, and they are designing that program now. But it includes credit assistance, so access to capital funds, training, curriculum, technical assistance, all of the things that, you know, small business seems to need. Coaching, you know, they're designing a program, an intake system. I think they talked about that. They're gonna meet with business owners and talk with them about what their needs are, and then sort of what we call triage those businesses into whether they need additional capital, whether they need workforce training, you know, all the, you know, all the things across the board that a small business would need in support. And so, that, Hope Credit Union, who operates in five or six states and has now a Montgomery office and is a CDIB fund, they will be handling that program, and that contract should be also moving along pretty quickly.
Well, I met with Mr. Darryl Washington on last week also about that program, and I'm excited, you know, being a person that's been a champion for small minority businesses. I am so excited about what they plan on doing with it, and I have limited my expertise on anything they need done with that. So, yeah, they're doing an excellent job with that.
They are. We were proud to get them in as a vendor. They have a very good track record in a lot of places, and so they've done this in many places, in many states, and so we're excited about them.
So we can put the number-one resolution about the intergovernmental agreement for small business support programs and violent crime prevention on the next agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
And the resolution to obligate funds and transfer funds through an intergovernmental agreement for the critical home repair program?
Yes, ma'am.
The third resolution is a resolution to obligate ARPA funds to the Parks and Recreation Department for the new construction of a community center.
Terry, is that one, Susan, is that one number three? Is that one on the agenda for the city too tonight?
Oh, sorry. I believe so, yes, sir. I think Counselor Mitchell has the same resolution for the city.
Okay.
So that'll go on the next agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a resolution for the city. So that'll go on the next agenda, just about. I have a resolution for the city. So that'll go on the next agenda, just about. I have a resolution for the city.
Technical difficulties.
Maybe it was not Susan that was up there.
It's a Tuesday, but it feels like a Monday. Technical difficulties. At least we know it's working. How about that?
The next item, number four, is a proposed program of work for development of a human resources department. We have been working, working with several different entities, and would like to enter into this agreement to work with Auburn University's Government and Economic Institute for them to provide technical assistance to help in the creation of our human resources department.
Yeah, they've got a pretty good track record of doing this.
Do a lot of work with counties.
Yeah, they do, so. Any question about that one? I mean, next agenda?
Item number five is an alcohol license application for off-premises retail beer and off-premises table wine to an applicant for Quick Shop Hope Hall 114 located at 77 Mobile Highway.
And the sheriff approves or signed off, he's okay with this one, I guess? Sheriff Cunningham?
You?
We have an alcohol license application for Quick Shop Hope Hall 114 located at 7700 Mobile Highway in Hope Hall.
As a convenience store.
Yeah, so you, I know you don't have any issue with that, okay.
Also, also have an alcohol license application for Saveway Truck Plaza located at 7735 Mobile Highway.
Yeah, that's all off-premise stuff, so that's, that's fine.
Item number seven is to consider a board member reappointment to the Montgomery Area Mental Health Authority.
I spoke to Dr. Tyree since our last meeting, and she has not only enjoyed serving in this position, she has been elevated to leadership, and she would very much like to continue her service, and she is a great asset on that, on that authority.
So, next agenda?
Consider a bid award to Galls LLC to provide the Sheriff's Office uniforms.
Be next agenda?
Consider a bid award to Gulf States for our solar message board for the Engineering Department.
George, what is that? Is that one of those that you put out on the road in solar powers, and you put messages on it?
Yeah, we have to sign the application over, and we use them all the time, all of them.
Yeah, just to say, traffic needs to be diverted and stuff like that, so. Is this a new one? You need a new one, or just replacing one of them?
Our, the one we had was a hit run and towed it out over one weekend, and then we bought one off of a state contract, and when the guy at NetWorks sent the guy, they were sending it back.
Okay.
So we did it out. This is my old.
Yeah. I mean, next agenda?
We have two general information items. First is a board member appointment to the Montgomery City County Personnel Board.
Commissioner Harris, I think you were, if you can hear me on the phone, I think you were working on that one? Can y'all hear Commissioner Harris at all? Unmute, Dan, if you're muted, you might wanna mute. When he submitted, the current board appointee, did, he submitted his resignation, would that do immediately, or?
Yes, and we need to, we need to move on this appointment, because if I understand it correctly, hearings have been postponed.
Didn't you recommend someone for it before?
I did, and I don't even remember who it was well. It didn't get any consideration.
Because I, yeah, I was, the person you recommended, I liked her.
Mm-hmm. We can certainly, you're referring to?
We can go back and?
Let's, let's move forward, and we'll come back. I'm texting Dan now.
Okay.
Let's move forward, and then we'll come back.
Item number eleven is a board member appointment to the Montgomery City County Library Board.
Mr. Joseph Trimble, I spoke with him, Ms. Chairman, and he's willing to continue his service, and he assures me that he's involved and he's making all the board meetings. So Joseph Trimble is interested in continuing.
Same with Ms. Patina Miles, I've spoken to her, so she's wanting to continue.
Good.
So we'll put those on the next agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Is that all we have for this? Do we have anybody signed in to speak that's here that wants to speak at ten? We can go ahead and entertain you now. Sheriff Cunningham, you not anything today?
Yeah, glad to see you.
Yeah? Okay. I was just, I was just joking, I didn't really want you to come up, now, so.
Yeah, I'm already there.
I shouldn't have said anything, so.
Hey, today is a great day. Thank you. Good morning to all, y'all. Yeah. But today we got Maxwell Air Force Base, they got thirty-six of their chaplains from all over the world. They're over there now, we're doing a CIT training, teaching them crisis intervention, talking about what we do on the, on the, on the real-world side, not the military side, so. But they have all their chaplains over, it's going great right now. We'll get Ken to go over pretty soon, sometime, and get some pictures. But we're gonna be doing lunch with them as well, and I'll be glad if you all wanna, if you're gonna be here, to come over and have lunch with us over in the Commons today. So it'd be great for them to see you all. Also, tonight, we're having our legislative fish fry and barbecue down at the train shed. You're getting an invite from me, so if you all wanna come to that, feel free, it's sheriffs around the state, we put it on for all of our delegations, so.
What time is that, Terry?
Uh, we're gonna start at five-thirty at the train shed, so you know, you all feel like coming, I want y'all to come.
Five-thirty till when?
We'll be there till about eight.
Eight o'clock?
Yeah, don't come after eight o'clock, and I'm gonna be trying to leave.
Ziegler, what's that meeting tonight's at six, right?
Six.
At Snowden?
Oh, you're gonna be there, but, you know, the rest of y'all, you feel like coming down? Come on down, we're frying fish and, and got camp stew and everything, so I'll be glad to have you all to come down and introduce you, so. But with that being said, I appreciate y'all, and thank y'all again, and if you get opportunity today, come over and meet the chaplains from the Air Force, they're there, and they're very inquisitive, they got a lot of questions, and so come on over and introduce yourself.
There, the Sun Belt Conference term we had talked about, trying to do something, that starts May the twenty-third and run through about the twenty-eighth or something like that, but I'll get back with you on that.
Yeah, I think you said you was gonna get up with me on when you wanna try to do something?
Do something for hospitality for them, to show them how much we appreciate them being here. They'll be at Riverwalk Stadium for five or six days in a row, so.
Okay. Well, we can do something, whatever you all decide you want me to do, we'll do it. I guess we need to probably get with the city and see.
Yeah.
Where we can set up and stuff like that.
With the biscuits, too.
Yeah.
And I'll initiate that and find out where.
Okay, okay.
And fortunately, we've already given them money, so.
Mm-hmm.
Remember that, right, you know?
Nah, I forgot already.
Yeah.
But no, I got you, just let me know. Thank y'all.
Florence, on the Personnel Board, Dan said he has not identified anybody yet, and he's open for suggestions.
I have two people that I'm talking to that I think would be great, so I'll make sure to bring, get that to you before the next meeting.
Yeah, and can we?
You know, Ms. Crawford, I gave you her resume, yeah, she has just an extensive amount of experience with personnel matters and her work with the United States Air Force, so she certainly needs to be considered.
I think, yeah, I think she does, definitely. I'm with that, too. She's, I've known her a long time, and she would be a great asset to the Personnel Board. Jacqueline Crawford.
Is that Greg Crawford's wife?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, but we need to, we need to make a, we need to make a decision quick.
Yeah, her resume was already in, so if we need to do it today, I would recommend that she be considered for that position, and appointed to that position. If it's an urgent matter, she's certainly qualified, has a good track record.
Look, we trying to figure out something.
He said it was urgent.
Yeah, it is urgent. Yeah, we can't keep holding up.
Yes, yes.
I'm waiting on Commissioner Walker. I was just waiting to see if.
I'm sorry, we're sorry.
No, that's, I was just waiting to see if we can move forward with Ms. Crawford, if everybody's seen her resume.
Yeah, her resume is impressive, I remember it from the last time it came around, and, and two commissioners have spoken to her and feel good about her, so with, with all of that in mind, I'm fine to waive rules today and, and go ahead, if, I mean, if that's the majority, how the majority feels.
Is there any objection to waiving rules today and moving forward with Ms. Crawford on the Personnel Board? She's still interested, I'm sure.
She is.
Yes.
So no objection to waiving rules, we'll do that today, then?
I believe that is all of our items.
We got a little time, is anybody here that wants to speak on anything? We'll entertain you a little bit.
No.
Cheryl, you got something?
I told them we're to have exit conference, or they manage after, if they're available, you want to come.
Are they available now?
They'd have to be here in five minutes.
Yeah, one time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Because that exit conference don't take long at all, so. Michael Bedare, you gonna give us an update on the Philadelphia Eagles and Jalen Hurts' new contract?
Wow, how about all that money? Money, money, is he gonna give you some of that money?
I'm horrified on Coach Stephen, that I might have a few years of bad luck in college.
Me, too.
Are they here, are they closed?
They're on way.
Okay.
Okay, well, yeah, that's great, we can knock that out, okay, cool.
Sharon, anything from the chamber you wanna add?
I'll just remind you, I issued an invite this evening at five o'clock at Springport with the Right Flowers reception.
That's tonight?
That's tonight.
Ooh, I forgot about that.
I mean, there are, there are six things going on tonight, on a Tuesday. April's always busy like this, there are things stacked up every night.
I have anything on my calendar.
Well, I didn't have Derek's stuff.
Where's the, I invited my wife to that one, I need to let her know. I can't, where's it gonna be?
Which ones?
Right Flowers.
Right Flowers is at Springport Building?
I thought it, okay, not?
Springport Building and Reducers, I think, tomorrow morning at eight-eight.
At RSA activity.
Please let me know if you're going to attend or if it's a late night.
Yeah, I think I've replied.
All of us, I think, attended, I think.
We've given, we've given our RSVPs.
We've, we've turned in a list.
Yeah, I think, I hope so.
And then y'all remember the?
What's Friday?
Valiant Cross is Thursday breakfast.
Friday, Sunday, Sunday belongs to me, Friday, yeah, yeah.
This week?
This week.
Do, do I need to wear tennis shoes on that one?
And I forget, Valiant Cross is Thursday breakfast. Four of us RSVP'd, Isaiah, did you, are you going to?
And I forget.
I'm not aware, but that's, too much is happening at one time.
It is not on my thing, I'm glad you said some, because I said Thursday's.
But y'all remember, I sent all that, and they saved us seats.
You did send it, you did send it. I thought I put it on my, oh, we didn't put it on my calendar.
And when is that again?
It's this Thursday. It's Thursday, why don't we have our little calendar of activities?
Calendar around here, we don't have calendars. Calendar around here. We don't have calendars. Y'all are, hey, so childish.
There are a lot of things that are going directly to y'all that we?
So we need to forge it?
We don't.
But we always have a little, oh, is it here?
No, I don't.
Valiant Cross breakfast is, and four of us RSVP'd, and I'll look back and see who that is, because it is sold out as well. It's at 8:00 AM at the Renaissance. Dan wouldn't, if he's out of town. Let me, Isaiah, I'll double-check you.
Can you hear me? Can y'all hear me now?
Yes.
Man, it's over.
Is it over?
Not weird.
Go back to your back seat.
No, I've, hey, I've been able, I've been able to hear you, you know, but I, I just, I just figured it out.
Okay, Isaiah, you are RSVP'd, that you are?
To unmute.
So I'll send, I'll send the Valiant Cross stuff back around to you guys.
I got it now, I'm good.
It's eight o'clock, right?
Eight AM at the Renaissance.
Okay, at the Renaissance.
Doors, doors open at 7:30. The program starts at eight.
Yeah, so.
Okay, 7:30.
So.
7:45 now.
Yeah, I'll be there by 7:45 at the Renaissance. And Cadillac's gonna be there. I'm really excited about that.
Who's Cadillac? Listen, y'all, I don't do this sports thing. I'm not a sports girl. No, I'm actually, actually partly knowing yes. I don't do sports. I'm not a sports girl. Now, if you talk about fashion, let's talk.
I can't even talk to you right now.
If you talk about designers, I'm ready.
Cornell Williams is a superstar.
I've met him.
Is the sheriff still in the room?
Yes, sir.
Sheriff?
Sheriff? Sheriff, I'm keeping your seat warm down here.
Oh, okay, well, I'll be, I'll be there tomorrow.
Where's Dan?
All right. Looking for you. Thursday's my birthday, y'all.
Oh, happy birthday, lady birthday. Happy birthday!
Thank, today is Vivica's birthday, my daughter's, and we're all down here in Florida, the whole family. We're gonna celebrate two birthdays.
That's awesome. You be blessed down there. Stay safe.
Sharon hasn't?
Yeah, it's kinda, kinda dangerous down here, but we'll be fine.
Dangerous?
We have, Sharon has one more announcement, and then we can go into our exit conference. Sharon?
We, I have no idea what you're talking about.
Me either.
Can you send an email to me on that?
Yeah, can you send some things out to us?
I got stuff about the Navy Admiral, but I didn't get anything about that.
I don't think I got anything. I think everybody forgets about me. I think, I never get stuff. Nobody remembers that I'm the county commissioner. Now, hello, I'm here.
So Sharon, that's Friday at what time?
When you're appointed.
At the 187th at Danley Field, right? And that's at what time, Sharon? 10:30? All right, we're gonna to?
Ms. Chairman, you know, we're actually expecting some children from Maxwell Air Force Base Department of Education as well as?
Maxwell Air Force Base Department of Education as well as?
The Baldwin Arts and Academic Magnet. If I hadn't known we was gonna be moving ahead this fast, I would've invited them to come at 9:30. But I think I see somebody outside the door, so we'll be entertaining them, I guess, after this next session.
Yeah, well, we're gonna go, we're gonna recess to, to audit exit conference, and we're, we'll be right back, at least by 10 o'clock, so.